And tonight, we've got four people here. Five people here, they couldn't see Bob. Five people here who want to represent us. And I know some of them, I have known them over the years. And I can tell you that if they're representative of all five, these people want to be our representative. They don't have to be politicians. They want to be our representative. Not a politician, meaning not for themselves. And that's what we're looking for. So we've got five qualified people here tonight. Real quickly, we'll introduce them and get started. Jan Dabaskas, right here. In just a moment, they're gonna, they'll be paying for applause. In just a moment, they'll tell you more about themselves as we get started. The young guy right now, Mason Gates, is here. He's new and young, we need new and young people, that's a good thing. Alex Quasman.
Don Adam.
Adam. He just corrected me before it started.
Adam Quasman.
Yes, Adam Quasman. And Adam was the first guy, I should remember this. Okay, and then, Leos, I know is your last name, and it's Austin, right?
Justin.
Justin. You know, I should have brought my pic drop. I brought my glasses, but I didn't bring the pic. And then Bob Lutere is down at the end. So, as we get started here, first thing we're gonna do is give each person one minute to say their right name. And also, to tell you something about them. So we'll start out with you, Jan.
Thank you everyone for coming today. My name is Jan Dabaskas, I'm a lawyer, a wife, a mom. I'm a precinct committee man here in LD3. I'm a captain, and I'm a state committee man in LD3. I am committed to this community. Thank you so much for having me, appreciate it. Barry Graham reached out to me about a year and a half ago, and he said, "Jan, it's worse, it's worse than we thought, we need your help." I wasn't sure what to do, so he said, "Why not go to the Citizens Academy?" I was general counsel, chief operations officer for a health insurance company. I like business. I loved the Citizens Academy, and I fell in love with Scottsdale all over again. We have the largest urban park in the United States. We have the largest sporting event in the United States. We have the most advanced water treatment plant in the United States. So why are our roads all messed up? Why are we living in a city that is the most charming city in the United States, and our term is fading? I'm afraid for my little girls, you know? This is not the place that I raised Trevor in, 10 years from now. So, I'm up here to work for you, and I appreciate your vote, thank you.
Good, Mason, Mason Gates.
Hi there, my name is Mason Gates. I originally grew up in Kansas City, Missouri, in a family of eight. I moved here as soon as I could. Despite what you might think, I don't work at Men's Warehouse. But, you know, I'm running for Scottsdale City Council because where many say that they want to see Scottsdale be successful, I say that I need it to be successful. Because this is my generation's future at stake. I care about this city. One of the things I really love about this community is the exclusivity, the affluency. But we'll get into that later, but that's one of the big things I'm focused on preserving. So, the only thing I'm looking to change is the existing leadership. Thank you.
Adam Quasman.
Hey everybody, I am Adam Quasman. I am a former Arizona state legislator. And in 2013, I was named the most conservative member of the Arizona state legislature. I am a husband, I am a father of four children, oh dear God. They are under the age of eight, no, they're objectively adorable. And I am, I want that pla, I want this place to be a place where we can go out to dinner without illegal Chilean street gangs breaking into our houses. I want to make sure that we live in a safe community, that homeless people aren't outside of our buildings sleeping overnight, and we're not having out of control overdevelopment. I want to make sure that Scottsdale is the Scottsdale that you know and love. I am proud to be endorsed along with Jan Dabaskas by Barry Graham and Kathy Littlefield because they need some backup up there at the city council. I'm proud to be supported by Joseph Chappell, Alex Collin, John Kavanaugh, Matt Gress. We have this support because we're building this beautiful alliance to make sure that we bring conservative values to Scottsdale. Thank you very much.
And Justin Laus.
Good evening everybody, my name is Justin Laus. So a little bit about me, I'm a sixth generation Arizonan. I lived in Scottsdale now for eight years. And so, kind of what Tim mentioned earlier, we need servant leadership. We need people that are here, that are caring about serving the community. Background of my service record, recently served on the Scottsdale's Board of Adjustment. Also involved my local Rotary Club, also involved in Big Brothers, Big Sisters for four years. And also went to Citizens Academy with Jan, we were there together. And so, my focus is Scottsdale's a great place to live. It's wonderful, we have amazing roads, we have amazing police, it's safe. It's a wonderful place, that's why I moved here, and that's why I want to stay here and, you know, live the rest of my life here. And so, my focus is to make sure we have servant leadership that's gonna be principled, reasonable, actually find solutions for the issues, not just create more problems. And so, that's what I'll make sure to do, I'll be fighting for you, serving, listening, and approaching everything in the most reasonable, thoughtful way. So, thank you.
Bob Lutere.
Hi Bob Lutere. I've been in Arizona since 1979, my first job in Arizona, I was with Revlon U.S., I was the operations controller. And as the community moved from manufacturing to tech, that's how my career moved. I'm still very active as CFO in the community. 2019, I was nominated for CFO of the year. And I'm a candidate that's gonna show up, and I'll tell you how. I showed up at City Hall and presented a petition against road diets, represented 300 citizens. I spoke and critiqued the budget, showed them that they had a $10,000 footing error. Nobody caught that. Told them that the budget didn't make any sense because transfers in were not explained. Transfer balances were not explained. I showed up at City Hall just recently and spoke up against the Macaro project. Nobody else did. And I put it right to the planning board, I said, "Do you stand for the citizens or do you stand for the economic interests of developers?" So that's who I am, I stand up.
Thank you Bob, thank you all. So we're gonna be right ahead with questions first. So we've got some questions that have been prepared in advance by different PCs and people involved in the party. So let's start with the first question. And it reads, "Residents say that traffic congestion is one of their top issues. The transportation planning director has stated in numerous presentations that traffic volumes have been flat for the past 20 years. Do you agree? If not, what will you do to correct the record?" And let's just start with Jan, right here, you're close to me, let's start with you, Jan.
All right, thank you. If I was to ask you, how do you feel about traffic? What would you say, is it better or worse?
Worse.
So, let's take the 101 for example. You know, they started the construction on the 101, right here in Phoenix, all the way down to Shea, in January. Our peak season. That seems like not the best idea. And so I thought, well, that can't be right. But actually, you know, because I do regularly go to the city council meetings, the director of Public Works, his name is Dan Worth, actually got up and made a presentation about the 101, and he said, "We agreed with ADOT to start in January." I was at Barrett-Jackson that week, it was a complete disaster. The 11 million visitors who come here, do they want to see our roads torn up? No, they don't, that's not the right impression of Scottsdale. So number one, we're gonna, we're gonna plan better, we're gonna plan smarter, we're gonna stop the road diets. Read my lips, no more road diets. We're gonna focus on what works for you, thank you.
Thank you Jan, who else wants to take that? Oh, we all do, okay. Justin, why don't you do it?
Yeah, so I think it's a great question. It's interesting when we're looking at data, and data says traffic's been flatlined, but obviously, we all feel traffic is different, it's more of an issue now than ever. And so, I think when we're trying to understand the issues, that's why. Maybe it's been, traffic is bad because they're in rush hour, it's worse than ever. And so, let's maybe look at some data on why that might be. 170,000 people driving to Scottsdale every day to go to work. 70,000 drive out of Scottsdale every day to go to work. Of course, during rush hour, it's gonna be really bad. So, we're not gonna actually properly address that problem if we're not understanding the problem. So we need to look at what's actually causing the traffic, what's having the impact. That's gonna be the best way that we can find the right solutions. And so, that's gonna be my approach, but traffic, most issues, understand the problem, find the right solutions.
Very good. Adam, how about you?
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna bring up that Tom Durham, the incumbent here, says that he never supported road diets, except for the 68th Street road diet that he supported. I am sick of politicians lying to me. They lie to our faces, he did it this last week, he won't stop. Tom Durham has to be fired if we're going to make sure that road diets stop in Scottsdale.
Bob's gonna take it now.
So, I live in McCormick Ranch, and Hayden Road runs through it. And it's really getting crowded, 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 so it's an obvious statement that traffic is worse. So what are we doing about it, right? I went to City Hall and presented a petition against road diets. I got the support of 300 citizens to support my petition. I'm against road diets, I proved it against road diets. I showed up at City Hall and spoke up against the Macaro project that was going to add 1,000 car trips a day on 92nd Street in Touche. So, I was there, I know that we have a problem, I'm pushing back against the problem, I'm doing something about the problem. We have 4,000 new apartments in the pipeline, it's only gonna get worse. So we have to draw the line in the sand and push back the way I have been doing it. Thank you.
And finally, just basically.
So first of all, I think a lot of people need to be fired. Second of all, you know, while they say that, you know, traffic has not gone up, they also say that crime has not gone up. I think we all know that that is a lie. So, they're manipulating statistics to make things seem one way when they're not. You know, I'll say you had the Hundred Year War, now you have the Hundred Year Construction on the 101. And to make it even better, they give you the Rain Tree Rodeo where you have 150 feet to merge into an 85 mile brown trail. But the point is, I live off 68th, 68th Street from Thomas, and I can tell you definitively that that road diet is an absolute nightmare. I said this at the candidate forum at City Hall a couple weeks ago. And I've sat at that line for two, three cycles, and it's ridiculous. I shouldn't have to wait because we're putting in biplanes that are used by 1% of the population for seven months out of the year. And that's the problem.
That, a lot of good answers, good answers from all of you. I live in North Scottsdale, and some of you do too. And man, I'll tell you what, it's very common now that Scottsdale Road is now the Scottsdale parking lot. Since January of 2021, when Tammy Capooty, Tom Durham, and Mayor Ortega took office, more than 3,600 units have been approved, and what, 7,000 were built? Oh no, I'm just saying that, but it seems like war doesn't. And there are two more projects pending approval along the Shea corridor. Do you support adding more apartments in Scottsdale? Let's start with Alex in a minute, what do you think? Adam in a minute, not Alex, he left, Adam's here. Go.
Monkey in the middle, okay. Absolutely not, and here's why. When you have, not only does it increase traffic and public, and it's a public safety issue, let's be honest, you're having people who are not part of our community coming in temporarily. I am a families-first candidate, okay? And I don't buy the BS that they're trying to tell you and say, "If you want to solve the affordability problem in Scottsdale, you have to build more apartments." I've got four kids, what apartment am I moving into? It doesn't make any sense. Scottsdale is for families, and we have to deal with families first. And let's also be honest of who's moving into these apartments. It's those who don't share the values of this room, okay? If you want to turn Scottsdale into Tempe, build more apartments. I am supported by Bob Wood and Kathy Littlefield for this specific reason. So thank you, we need to think about single-family homes and residents first.
Let's take Mason, thanks.
No, I do not. First of all, I'd like to make it clear, I don't think there is an existing land parcel remaining in Scottsdale that is zone for high density, which means every single one of those propositions goes before the council. So that's why it's important who you're voting for. I'll add on that point by, you know, he did make a great point, it's all about public safety, right? But the other thing is, this is Scottsdale, this isn't Tempe, this isn't Phoenix, and if you want to be coddled by the government, you can go right around the corner. But this is Scottsdale, this is an exclusive, and this is an affluent community. People have worked their entire lives to have enough money to live in a community as nice as DC Ranch and Greyhawk. And just because you're 23 years old and you're upset that you can't live next door to mom and dad, doesn't mean that you have a right to live there. And that's what I hear a lot of times, is this sense of entitlement of, well, people want to live here. That's fantastic, and it's gonna remain that way as long as we remain exclusive. Thank you.
Mason, very good.
So as I mentioned, I went to City Hall and spoke out against the Macaro project, so of course I'm against that, so you. But here's what I made a very strong point of. Builders want apartment houses because they're continuing a stream of revenue, right? Apartment houses for developers are a continuing stream of revenue. I support building smaller, single-family units. But they don't like that, because that's one and done. So as I put it at, put it to the council, I said, "Who do you favor? The voice of the citizens or the economic advantage of the developers?" So, certainly I'm against it, and we have to start talking up it. We presented our plan to the builders. We told them that we would not accept multi-unit apartment houses, that we wanted smaller, single-family units.
Thank you Bob.
So we're told that we have a water shortage. But then, we're building more apartments. We're told that, we have, we know that we have traffic, but we're building more apartments. We're told that apartments, the lack of rent tax is affecting our budget, $25 million a year. And so, our property taxes, we need to get that revenue from property taxes, and we need to increase our sales taxes as well. But we're not getting taxed on the apartments. So it seems to me that we have a conflict of interest here with these apartments moving forward. The Optima's apartments that are being built right now, 11 stories on the 101 in Scottsdale Road, that's 1,300 apartments, we've got 1,200 apartments going in at the park, which is Cracker Jack's. These are a lot of things that haven't been seen by the residents yet. My concern is that we are eventually going to be Austin, Texas, which used to be a cute, charming western town. We are Scottsdale. We are not Austin, Texas, and that's why I'm here to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you Jan. Justin, what do you got?
Yes, so I have three main points for this one. I think first one for me is, we have to realize that for decades and decades, we've always heard the same thing. Everyone says they're anti-apartments, they're anti-density, they get an office, and then they vote differently. I think the reason for that is when you get an office, you understand, you're not supposed to be pro-apartment, anti-apartment, pro-anything, anti-anything. Your job is to make the right decision for the right projects in the right area. My platform for development is ownership, quality, common sense. If a project's gonna come to the city council, it needs to fit those three criteria. It needs to be the best thing for the city, apartment, condo, whatever it is, as long as it fits the city and it's the best thing. My other point I'd like to say as well is, I hear a lot of hate about apartments, I understand. My point of view, or my objectives, is to make sure, we all have houses here, but I want to make sure your kids live down the road from you. I want to make sure your kids can start families here, be in Scottsdale, be part of the community for as long as they can. We need to make sure we do have housing for them, housing like a lot of people do live here. That's gonna be my goal, and you're not gonna hear the same thing over and over again. I'm gonna be a little different with that, so thank you.
Very good, good comments from everybody, excellent. Four, "Residents say they don't think their voices are being heard. Do you agree? And what will you do to change that?" Jan.
The moment that I decided that I needed to get more deeply involved was the road diet meeting. Kathy and Barry had been telling me, "Jan, we need your help, we need your help." I've been in the Citizens Academy, and John said, "Why don't you go to the city council meetings?" So I started going. At that road diet meeting, about 200 of us showed up. And Tom Durham on the dais said, "You know, I see about 200 of you here. I got emails from, I don't know, 3, 400 of you, but there's 250,000 people in the city of Scottsdale, so we're not really worried about what you have to say." He said that to us from the dais. Who else was here, was at that meeting? You heard it, right? We all heard it, it was shocking. I had coffee with Kathy Littlefield two weeks later, and she said, "Jan, I would love for you to run for Scottsdale City Council, I will support you." We are not being heard by this council.
I don't think they support the residents-first movement at all. I think there's a lot of complacency in our current city council right now, right? You see 560% budget overruns, and they just, you know, blame it on inflation. I don't know what world they're living in, but my job is heavily reliant on the market. I can tell you right now, CPI is around 22% over the last four years. So that's a lie, and that's not how that works. You see budget overruns, not just there, but you see 200% there, 300% there. $150 million of overruns in the last year alone. That is a problem. Not only that, they are actively working against the best interests of residents. Residents don't want road diets, yet we vote them in. Residents don't want apartments, yet we vote them in. The question is, at what point do we realize that these people don't care about us, and they care about who lines their pockets? Thank you.
You know, God bless the Goldwater Institute for doing what they're doing, if you have in the priority. Thank, yeah, and we have, Ivan's here, right? Ivan's still here. Yes, one of the plaintiffs, and Sue's here, one of the plaintiffs, thank God. Here, here's the deal, Goldwater Institute just sued, and they're gonna win, on stopping this horrible bait-and-switch tax referendum. Here's how bad and how much the Scottsdale City Council isn't listening to you. They, the current sales tax to purchase the incredible preserve, it's succeeded. They bought the preserve, the sales tax expires, which means that sales tax for the preserve goes to? Zero. They want to put a new sales tax in to pay for their pet projects that are already being paid for in the general fund budget, in a bait-and-switch, and saying, "Oh, it's a, it's an extension and a reduction of your taxes." They're lying to you, and they just got caught for it. We need to stand up against out-of-control politicians at every level, from DC all the way on down, to make sure that we don't have, I'm just, I'm sick of government lying to us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we always want government to listen, we always want to be heard by our government. And I think a good thing to keep in mind here is, we feel like they listen, but only around election time, only when they're running for office. And maybe it's not sometimes then. One of the goals I'm gonna be doing is making sure on council, we institute new mechanisms for citizens to get involved. New ways for them to actually have their voice heard, understand the issues, understand what the city's doing. The best way for citizens to be involved is to make sure they understand what the city's doing, and the city can understand what their concerns are. Right now, the only mechanism you have is to go to city council, and you have three minutes to talk to them. Can you get, can you get a good point across in three minutes? Can you actually communicate what you're feeling, why? So we need new ways, new modern ways to actually communicate with city council, get those ideas across so you can be heard. That's what I'm gonna do.
And so, Bob.
So how I found out that the people are not heard, as I mentioned, I had a petition against road diets. There were 300 people that signed it, I presented it at City Hall. They listened to me, and by rule, they gave me an answer in 30 days. They said, "Thank you for your comments, but we'll rely on the staff." So, isn't that clear evidence that they didn't listen to the citizens? Another really interesting story. Senior citizen called me up just a couple of days ago, and told me that I see you running. And she was complaining about fireworks. It's getting close to 4th of July, and she's afraid of fireworks. So, she said, "What would you do to help me?" So I said, "Well, call me, you know, and why not get on the council line now? And I'll call the police, and if the police don't listen, I'll go to my friend, Derek Sheridan, and we'll take action." But that was really such evidence that people don't believe, not only that they're not listened to, but they're not protected. Thank you.
Bob wants to review standing as we move to the next question, and we'll move this way. So Bob, first question here is to you first. It's, "Residents say they don't think their voices are being heard? Do you agree?"
Yes.
And what would you do about it?
We didn't actually say though, what would you do about it? That's the part. So what would you do about it, to make the citizens hurt?
First of all, I would listen to the citizens, right? I would listen to what their concerns are, and then address them. And I believe that I've given evidence of that, I have listened. They don't want road diets. I presented a petition. They don't, they don't want high rises, I spoke up at City Hall against the Macaro project. So that's what I would do, to make sure that citizens are heard. I represented, I'm not on the council, but I represented the citizens that deeply want the road diets. I represented the citizens that deeply want the Macaro Village project. So that's what I did.
Dustin.
Well, I feel like in my previous answer, I kind of discussed some of the things I want to do. I would also like to point out, today I talked to a citizen, called me up, wanted to add some questions about why I was running, and some of my positions, but he also mentioned a problem that he had. In his neighborhood, in his alley, they changed the trash sizes from the larger trash size to a smaller one that required to be in his garage. And he wanted to know why they did this, because it made his life less inconvenient. He had to pull his trash in and out every day, it didn't make a lot of sense. And so he called up the city, trying to understand why, who made this decision. And he got redirected, I think he said about eight times, from this department to that department to this department. And so clearly, we have a problem here in our government, where you want to find out an answer, you want to understand why something was done, you don't know who to go to. I wouldn't even know who to call right now. So, that's something we need to look at, we need to be solution-oriented. We need to actually solve these problems, find solutions. And again, that's what I will do for you, so thank you.
We need to fire some of that staff that's there, I'm telling you. We have these chartered staff officers there, that they're not, they're not beholden to anyone. And it scares the living daylights out of you when you have unelected bureaucrats, who just by the way, got a 25% raise. I don't know about you, did you guys get a raise this year? By 25%? They got a 25% raise, was it two weeks ago? They just got, disgusting. We need, we need major, major structural reform at the council and in the city of Scottsdale, so that you don't, you're not being lorded over by a bunch of unelected bureaucratic staff that's there forever.
Yes, so, well, I think Tammy, let them be Kate Capooty, she's been coined, will tell you, you know, that she's just gonna do what she wants, and doesn't care what you have to say. The difference is, we need people in office who have energy, people who are willing to take on these challenges, and actually hear what people have to say. So whether that's hosting town halls, whether that's making it more accessible for people to access members of the city, or whether that is firing people like Jim Tenour Thompson, something needs to change. And I can assure you right now that I love to work and I hate to sleep, and I'd love to put that abuse to the bone, so thank you.
I think the number one thing that we can do is make ourselves more accessible. It is shocking to me when I see some of the emails from folks, and they email into city council, they take the time, they take the energy, and make the effort to go ahead and do that, and they get no response whatsoever. There are a number of people who have said to friends of mine, you know, "I've emailed in, I've gotten no response." So number one, we need to be out there, we need to be meeting with you, that's why I'm door knocking, that's why I'm a PC, because I'm out there and I'm with the community all day long, every day. I perceive that as my number one job. The other thing is that there are a lot of boards and commissions that favorites are getting onto. We need more of you involved in our government, so that you have eyes. I only have two. I need all of your eyes as well. We need to get you guys nominated and elected to some of these boards and commissions. The parks, the transportation commission, the airport advisory commission, the neighborhood commission. We need friends who can have an eye and also report in, "Hey, this is another area, Jan, did you know that we could use help here? And I will help you get those resources." So I'd love to get you guys more involved as well in some of these volunteer positions, because this is your city. Let's, let's get you there too, thank you.
Very good and very specific answers, very good. Next one relates to staffing. It's, "The city manager just received a raise to $390,000 per year. Do you approve the job the city manager is doing? And if not, are you willing to terminate his employment?"
So, so, over a year ago, Jim Thompson went to council and said, "I have an idea. I'm at retirement age. I would like to quit and be hired back as a contractor for a year, and then be hired back as the city manager. And if I do that, then I can collect my full pension as a city employee." So, he worked as a contractor for a year, because you're not allowed to work for a year for the city while you're taking retirement, a year afterward. And magically, a year later, he got rehired. So he's not making $390,000 a year, he's making $500,000 a year, getting double paid. That is not integrity that I want to see from my city manager. What kind of example is that? Number one, is he setting for our employees, he's telling, "It's okay, let's just take all the money out of the city, let's just take, let's just take all the money, it's not okay." And so, on that basis alone, I have very serious concerns about Jim Thompson.
Very good, Mason.
I got two words, you're fired. So Jim Thompson, in case you don't know, is paid $390,000 now, not $375,000, where he was already the highest city, highest-paid city employee in the entire valley. Two, he has a requirement- valley, to, he has a requirement of 10 hours of office time per week. I mean, how do I get that job? That's the real question. So yeah, he needs to be fired, and it's not just the fact that he's getting paid so much money, which is just an astronomical amount, it's the fact that he does not, you know, he doesn't go after projects that actually need to get done. As a resident of South Scottsdale, I find myself just stalling out in the middle of the seven potfuls on Thomas Road every day. And it's ridiculous that we're making tons of roundabouts everywhere that we can find them, and we're not fixing the critical infrastructure that our city needs. Thank you.
So also, let's take, let's go past Jim Thompson. I think we all agree where we're at on Thompson. Let's, let's talk about structural reform, right? So what does that look like in a post-Thompson world? How do we make sure? By the way, when you have these unelected bureaucrats limited, who has more power? It's the council, which means who has more power? It's you. It's everybody in this room. So we need term limits for, for city managers. We need term limits. And by the way, I'm not just ready to fire Thompson. That city, that city attorney cost the taxpayer, I looked at the news, says it cost Scottsdale $5 million by losing a lawsuit. It doesn't cost Scottsdale. Who does it cost? Costs you, $5 million bucks. I own a law firm. If one of my lawyers lost a, lost a $5 million case and it cost me, how long is it before I fire them? They're going to the curb. The treasurer, all these people need to, we need clear house, clean house, structural reform where they're term limited, because with them limited, you're in power.
Well, at the end of the day, it's the council that elects our city manager, our executives, the treasurer, all those kind of people. It's the city council that elects them. So at the end of the day, we're the ones who are responsible, and that's how I think it should be approached. And so if you're not liking what your city's doing, the council's responsible. Along with Jim Thompson, is he paid a lot? Sure. At the same time, every city manager across the country, that's how much they're paid. And my goal with that is to make sure we're getting the most we can out of our money. And if we're going to find somewhere, we're going to find the best person, do the best job. And what council should be doing is setting what criteria, what metrics are we measuring success of for our city manager? Hiring them on and saying, go do whatever, and then we'll see if you do a good job. How do we know we're doing a good job? End of the day, we're going to have to pay it fair rate, we're going to have to be competitive to get the best talent in. That's make sure they're doing the right job and they're doing it well.
I'm looking at, looking at Thompson's transmittal letter, right? It's a budget, and he did the transmittal letter. The transmittal letter made no sense, because it didn't reconcile the beginning to the end. It didn't talk about the big shifts that were unexplained. So regardless of what he's paid, I don't see that he's really doing an effective job. He's not communicating to we, the people, making it straight. Why not give us clarity and transparency in the budget? What is the transfer in? Now, one of the things that really amused me, there's an article right here in the paper. Now, the budget clearly said that the revenue was 1.2 billion dollars in round dollars. That's what the budget said. That's what he handed out. There's a quote from the paper. It says right here that Thompson unveiled the budget, April 16th, city council meeting. He said, this coming fiscal year, the city expects to rake in around 2.55 billion in revenue, mainly from taxes. Well, right here, it says that the revenue is 1.9 billion. Now, how can they that kind of disconnect to somebody that makes that kind of money? So I would say that if he reports to me, he's going to be in trouble.
We got a lot of quality people here, folks. Last question that's prepared here. We're all concerned about tax dollars and how they're being spent. The question is, do you support the proposed tax increase to fund the maintenance of parks and Westworld?
Let's start with you, Jan. We'll just come right back this way.
So 16% of this tax, this new tax, goes to the preserve. And about 50% of it goes to our parks. And primarily the parks in South Scottsdale. About 20% of it goes to Westworld. And there's another portion in there for a new fire truck that we need, there's another portion in there for park rangers. Would you say that we need all of these things? We need parks, we need to maintain the preserve, we need a fire truck, we need police officers. I'm endorsed by Scottsdale Police, by the way. We need all of these things. Should it be paid for through a new sales tax? Seems to me parks should be maintained under the general fund. New fire trucks should come under the general fund. I don't understand, and I can't give anybody to give me a straight answer about why we can't pay for these things from the general fund. Until I have an answer on that, my answer is that I want this money to come from the general fund, and I want to know what we're spending our money on that we don't have enough money for our basic infrastructure. Thank you.
So as much as I hate taxes, I understand the need for them in certain situations. However, as I watch them spend the money egregiously, and I see things like 14 out of 58 of the projects from the 2019 bond have been completed, and people like Tammy Caputi are saying, that's amazing. I take issue with that. And that tells me right there that these people don't care. And the problem isn't that we don't have enough money, the problem is, we're not spending it properly. And so I think if we actually start looking into how we're spending the money, and we start focusing on spending it properly, we'll be a lot better off, and we won't need to worry about raising taxes. Now, if you want somebody who's a proven fiscal conservative, go ahead and take a look at my campaign finance report when I put it out on July 1st. I am single-handedly running this campaign. I put up every single intersection sign by myself. I've done all the graphic design, all the website, everything. And I'm saving tens of thousands of dollars doing that, so thank you.
I love the fiscal conservatives in this room. It's great. I'm voting for everybody. I love, okay. We absolutely, this is the, see, here's the beauty of Scottsdale, is that we can have all of these wonderful things without raising new taxes. We can have safe streets, we can have new fire trucks, we can have a safe preserve. We don't need to raise your taxes to do this. So in the, in this world, if you're going to send in a new quarterback, here's where I think I have a value added. I served on the appropriations committee. I served on the Ways and Means Committee at the state legislature, and I was named the most conservative member of the Arizona Legislature. Send in the quarterback who knows how to play this game, okay? We're going to make sure we keep your taxes low so that you can go as far as your God-given talents can take you, while making sure that we spend your money effectively, efficiently, and not wasting it. We can do this. I believe in it.
So I think what Jan said was really correct. Looking at the items in this, they're all things that are really crucial to what we need in the city right now. Investment into our parks, investment into the preserve to prevent fire, investment into Westworld to make sure we're bringing in these high-quality events that really contribute to our economy. All these items are all items we need as a city to maintain the beautiful place we live in. So my question is, okay, if we need these things, then what are our options?